Please call the roll.
Alderman Stralczek.
Here.
Alderman Talaco.
Here.
Alderman Meyer. Alderman Hancher.
Here.
Alderman Bach.
Here.
Alderman Parrish.
Here.
Alderman Brad.
Here.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Here.
And Mayor Nervin.
Here. First up, we have a public hearing. Ordinance 2024-1673, an ordinance amending the following for the property located at 2803 and 2909 West Maquon Road. A, the city's zoning map within Chapter 58 of the Maquon Municipal Code from single-family residential one acre R3 to institutional public service IPS and the planned unit development overlay PUD. And B, the city's land use map for residential one to one and a half acre to institutional. This was recommended by the Planning Commission on December 2nd and a first reading at Common Council on December 10th. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. All is in favor of going into public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in public hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we're back and will immediately consider this ordinance. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion in a second.
Second.
Any comments or questions from staff? Alderman Meyer.
Question for staff. What limitations are there on the IP? And what I mean is that for development-wise, I know they said that they, it's going to be for expansion of the lot and for the other building, but there's still a lot of other property around that for that. So just wondering what the limitations on it. I do remember that back on, a while back, we had some, some of that along Buntruck Road had that, and then there was a developer wanted to come in and because it was a certain type of housing, it fall under that category, and so it was never developed, but I mean, proposed coming in there and having some apartments in there.
So this property, what we did is we expanded the IPS to the, the property is split zone right now. So there's our three residential on one half and then institutional on the other. So in exchange for allowing institutional on the other half, we put a PUD over that only allows for religious institutions to be on the site. So it's kind of a protection. So the only thing they can do with there is anything related to a religious institution. If they wanted to do senior housing or something else, they'd have to come back and amend their
But they would be eligible to do that.
Well, anybody could come back, they could ask for rezoning at any time to do that. We didn't want to put, we didn't want to give them the base zoning of IPS though, then the permitted uses under the IPS, they would be allowed to do without any rezoning request. But this would require a rezoning request to do anything other than religious institutions
Any other comments or questions for staff? Good question. All right, if there are no other comments or questions, please call the roll.
Alderman Stralczek.
Aye.
Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
And Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Onto our next item, personal appearances and public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time. If you desire to be heard on agenda items, you may be heard when that item is considered on the agenda. Please speak into the microphone at the podium. Time limit is five minutes. We have one person registered to speak, Kara Stawicki, 14045 Twin Oaks Lane. Hello?
Hi, yes, my name is Kara Stawicki and I reside, as you mentioned, at 14045 Twin Oaks Lane, which is the far northwest corner of Maquon there. And Alderman Stralczek is my alderman, who I had the pleasure of speaking with on the phone last night. I'm here for the first time to discuss with you a couple of things and my preeminent concern about the police, not, not to the response to what occurred at my home this past Saturday evening, but public sharing of information in relation to crimes here in Maquon. So just to give you a little bit of background, my home, my husband and I and my daughter left to go to a play, 6:15 on Saturday night. And in between 6:15 and 9 o'clock, my home was broken into. And my home was broken into really in a very aggressive fashion in the sense that they shot a BB gun from my backyard into a side window and then proceeded to realize that there wasn't an alarm system. And then they shattered the second story balcony patio door and scaled the back of my house and gained entry into my home. My safe was taken with all of our vital documents and as well as much jewelry that had sentimental and as well as monetary value. In the days since that happened, and obviously this is very fresh and I'm very shaken by what happened, I've discovered some things that happened locally that were shared with me with the police who arrived at the scene, who were kind and prompt and courteous. But they shared some things with me and then I found out the day after that a very similar event, almost identical event, occurred in the house directly behind mine, just mere weeks before that. And so just in thinking about this and realizing as I started to delve into what is shared with our communities, not only like amongst neighbors, but how are the police proactively sharing this information with people so that it doesn't hopefully happen again? And I'm not saying that police can prevent these things from happening, but making people aware. When I looked at the Maquon Facebook page, when I looked at the departmental website, nothing is shared about crimes in the area. And my question is, how many crimes need to occur and how many types of these types of burglaries need to happen for proactive sharing of information to happen? I took the liberty just for a minute today to look at what other police departments share, and if it's okay, I'd like to come up and pass out copies. For Germantown, for instance, shares weekly on their Facebook page, the number of burglaries. They don't share necessarily specifics, but they share what their police departments are up to. And then the second paper is a copy of a previous police chief here in Maquon had, and this is a number of years ago, they were posting seven, eight years ago, but they were on the app next door that would actually talk about, be alert in this neighborhood, such and such crime happened. Nothing, I mean, I went down a rabbit hole today of where are we sharing information for residents to know that these things are going on and how many have to occur? I'm really here to just kind of open the dialogue and see how we can be better in the future because I don't want this to happen to anybody else. I mean, when I found out that the house behind me had been burglarized in exactly the same way, the weekend after that home was burglarized, I had five 11-year-olds in my basement for a sleepover. And I think that those thieves were in my backyard watching, and that scares me. And I'm not saying that police could have prevented it, but we need to talk about how we're going to talk about this as a community. The last thing that I do want to share is that I felt somewhat assured when the police left on Saturday evening, but this morning I was driving down Pioneer Road right next to my house and drove past Hawksland subdivision, which is a very affluent $2 million home subdivision. And there was a random black SUV that was vacant parked at the entrance of the subdivision. I stopped and called the police just because my hackles are up because of what just happened to me very close to that area. And I called the police and an officer promptly responded. And I shared with him why I was calling this information in, and he said, I didn't know that that crime occurred in your neighborhood. It happened less than 72 hours ago. Why within the department does an officer who's responding this morning not know what happened less than a, less than a mile away? Like I'm just, I'm thinking, this is not a department that's responding to homicides on a regular basis. How are we using our time and energy and resources to help keep our community safe? So I'm just going to share this with you and then I don't want to go on a dawson, but I just want to share. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any questions.
This is going to be a topic of future discussion at public safety perhaps, per the recommendation of Alderman Stralczek. This is just public comment, so we receive comment, but we're not, it's not on the agenda, so we're not having active dialogue, but it's going to be a topic of future.
And the last thing I did actually want to share was that in digging into this, I actually looked at any of the documents that are on the, on the public portal for information for Maquon. And Maquon published this lovely financial report on page 10 that I kind of dog-eared today. It shows the like a pie chart of the financials for the police department. Cedarburg, forgive the terrible copy that I printed, has comparisons of what they respond to, how many officers responded to what. Why are we not sharing this data with citizens? And again, this is all after the fact, but it's just a larger picture in my opinion of what we're sharing with residents. It felt today like there was no transparency about what's being done. And that concerns me. We pay a lot of money to live in what we consider to be a safe place, but safe place has crime just like anywhere else. So I'll just, I think that this is important for everybody to stay in higher awareness.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for your time. And I look forward to hopefully coming back and continuing the conversation as to what can be done. And I actually had a lovely opportunity to talk with Chief Riley today for a little bit. He was very open to hearing my concerns and I appreciate that, but I definitely think that there needs to be some more dialogue.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very quickly, Alderman Stralczek.
I know, and I can either take my five minutes here or I can take it there. So I'll keep it brief. This is my district and this is a resident that reached out to me last night that I had a nice conversation with. I just wanted to thank her and the community because I know there's other community members in the audience today that came forward to speak on this. I wanted to share with everybody that in the previous meeting, which is our meeting where we can ask for agenda items to be added, I asked for a review of kind of our policy on police communications as well as just how we disseminate information within the community. Alderman Bach offered, you know, as a representative of the Public Safety Committee to take that item up and to review that, was grateful for the opportunity to work on something with some meat on the bones. I also wanted to share with just the community that we've got a very safe community. Again, this doesn't come up often, but it does come up on occasion as, as break-ins do come in, and our police department is amongst the best in the state. I wanted to thank our police department for their willingness to not only work with the resident and the positive feedback that I've received from her on the phone today as well as other neighbors and, and their fair and unbiased way of dealing with the issues within our community as they do come up, even though they don't come up often. So just sharing that there's already action in place to address this on, on your behalf. So thank you for speaking out. I'm glad you made it public record. Not everybody at home knows the conversation that was in the last meeting, so I just wanted to share that we are addressing this as a community already. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on any item not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to public officials reports. I have nothing. As a city administrator, have anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we have a very full agenda this evening, but I have one key announcement that I'd like to share here tonight. In-person absentee voting for the spring election, which will take place on Tuesday, April 1st, will begin next week. This is early voting, as most of us know it. That'll take place here at City Hall between the dates of Tuesday, March 18th through Friday, March 28th. Again, Tuesday, March 18th through Friday, March 28th. Registered voters here in Maquon can vote early, in-person absentee here at City Hall between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. Many races will be on the ballot, including the Justice for the Wisconsin Supreme Court, Superintendent for the Department of Public Instruction. And we also have local elections here for both the school board, our mayor, and two aldermanic seats on the Maquon Common Council. So again, early absentee voting starts next Tuesday, March 18th, and runs through Friday, March 28th, prior to the April 1 election. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have 12 sets of minutes from boards and commissions or other staff reports, along with one resolution. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? Alderman Parrish.
Yep, the committee talked about polling ordinance, the first reading and three.
We're not the ordinance first reading just yet. Yeah, I gotta read those. I'm, I'm just talking about the consent agenda for items A through M.
Thank you.
I know what you're talking about though, we'll get there.
Then I won't bring it up again.
We'll bring it up in about 30 seconds, please. Is there a motion for the consent agenda to approve items A through M? Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those items are approved. Onto ordinance first readings. Ordinance first readings will not be acted upon unless there's a suspension of the rules and recorded by a majority of two-thirds vote of all aldermen. So first ordinance 2025-1675, an ordinance amending Chapter 58 of the Maquon Municipal Code allowing showroom sales facilities as a conditional use within the city's B4 zoning districts. This was recommended by the Planning Commission February 24th and further recommenda, or was it, further recommended by welfare, Public Welfare Committee? That's next month, okay. That's a forecut, foreshadowing of what might happen next month. It is a first reading. Ordinance 2025-1676, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Maquon Municipal Code related to alcoholic beverage licensing. This was recommended earlier this evening by Finance and Personnel Committee and is a first reading. And ordinance 2025-1677, an ordinance amending Section 2-230 of the Maquon Municipal Code relating to employee discipline. This was recommended earlier this evening by Finance and Personnel, but there may be a motion to suspend the rules.
Alderman Parrish, you got that?
I got this, guys. I had moved to suspend the rules and consider ordinance 2025-1677 tonight, which would put the employee code of conduct back in full force in effect.
Second.
There's motion in a second. So we have to vote to suspend the rules first. So the following vote is for suspension of the rules so we can consider the ordinance. Please call the roll.
Alderman Talaco. Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt. And Alderman Stralczek.
Aye.
All right. Now this ordinance that I just read that I won't read again is in front of us for consideration.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Just for those following along at home, there was a typographical error that happened some number of years ago that resulted in a section of the code being omitted, and we were putting it back where we found it. Hence the desire to do it as expeditiously as possible. So if there are no other comments or questions, please call the roll.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Stralczek.
Aye.
And Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
That passes. Onto ordinances, we have no other ordinances this evening. Next is resolutions. Resolution 4183, a resolution adopting the 2025 City of Maquon Comprehensive Park Recreation and Open Space Plan. This was recommended by the Park and Open Space Board on February 19th and was also recommended by the Planning Commission on February 24th.
Move approval.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Just to the people at home watching, have a little bit of idea what this is about, there's a, a plan, a comprehensive plan for the parks. We have to update every five years if we hope to ever get any grants, money from the state or the federal government. So this is a part of a ongoing process to keep those plans up to date and relevant so that when we, the need arises, we can qualify for such things and helps guide other policy decisions throughout, throughout the years as we budget for things. So there's enough of a backdrop. See, this isn't budgetary. All is in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The plan is adopted. Resolution 4184, a resolution approving the first amendment to a license agreement with AT&amp;T extending the term for the cellular tower located at 11800 Northport Washington Road through 2041. This was recommended earlier this evening by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Move approval.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on this item? There's a little bit of money involved here. Please call the roll.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Stralczek.
Aye.
Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
That resolution passes. Onto Resolution 4185, a resolution clearing the personal property tax rule of delinquent accounts deemed uncollectible for tax rule 2023. This was recommended earlier this evening by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, comment is just a reminder if the public reads this that we're not just writing it off. Many of them are going just to collections, so it's a, it's a shift in the books. You'll see some businesses that are currently open.
Writing them off for the purposes of calculating fiscal performance, but we won't stop trying to collect it. Correct.
Agreed.
Thank you for the added color. Any other comments or questions? If not, please call the roll.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Stralczek.
Aye.
Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Onto Resolution 4186, a resolution amending the city's FY25 compensation plan in connection with reorganization of the Public Works Department. This is recommended earlier this evening by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions for staff about the reorganization? Hearing and seeing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That two passes. Onto Resolution 4187, a resolution approving amendments to the City of Maquon fee schedule for fiscal year 2025 related to athletic fields, lempke park concession fees and pool fees. This was recommended by the Park and Open Space Board on February 29th and was considered earlier this evening by Public Works.
Public Works approved that, so I'm going to move the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion from the, from the council? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Stralczek.
Aye.
Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
That passes as well. Onto Resolution 4188, a resolution adopting the 2025 Maquon-Thievesville Bike and Pedestrian Way Plan, recommended by, this was recommended by the Joint Maquon-Thievesville Bike and Pedestrian Way Commission, February 13th, and further recommendation forthcoming this evening from Public Works.
Public Works approved, so I move the motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Alderman Bach.
You know, it's, when I looked, looked at this, I just struggle to kind of approve a consultant report as, as an official plan. And I'm not, not sure we've ever done that. In this, this is a consultant report, and in that report, there is so much. And I, and I get that you need to approve a plan for state funds and all of that, but I wish that we would have been able to take that consulting report, pick out the golden nuggets that are actually doable, and maybe make something happen over the next five years. Because much of what is in that report is just never going to happen. And then what you, what happens is, you know, you've got a consultant report and you spin your wheels and you don't make any progress, and then five years from now, we're going to have another consultant report and you gotta go through the whole process. So I just was wishing that, you know, we've got, this, this committee is really good-hearted. I understand they don't have a budget. I'm not sure what their connection is to the Parks Board. I'm not sure what their connection is to Maquon-Thievesville Trails. And so we saw this, you know, this great consultant report of all these good things, much of which we're never going to be able to afford, but there are some little things that you, you can do. And I guess I would have liked to have seen this as the, the report as an addendum, but much like, you know, the sewer group and all those things where you see, okay, over the next five years, this is what we're going to do, these three or four things, this is the cost estimate. You know, you don't even have to have exact estimate, you could have $5 signs or $3 signs, you know, and then each year you could move it to another year if it's not accomplished, but then you have something that maybe would happen. So that, those are, those are my comments on, on that report, and I'm sure some others will have some, something to say.
Alderman Parrish.
Thank you. Yeah, let me just piggyback on that because you said that really gracefully, probably more than I could have, but I guess I've had a little bit of, let me start off by thanking those who contributed to this report, which is an excellent report. I'm so glad it's not like a 50-page report. It's actually a very concise, informed, graphical, well-laid-out report. So kudos to the, to Graff, who I believe prepared it, and to staff who assisted, and pedestrian and bikes committee who helped prepare it. I've had some concerns from the beginning about the third-party nature of it, you know. Alderman Bach articulated it's a joint Thievesville-Maquon Committee, who we appreciate their work and their recommendations, but we as a body need to decide what's in the best interest of, of our residents. And it was an open survey, so really anyone could have participated. I'm not sure how they know that, you know, six, 75% of the participants were from Maquon, and then I think 5% were not from either, is what I saw. So I don't know that it was a controlled study, I just don't know enough about it. But to, the wording of the motion tonight is adopting this bike and pedestrian plan, I, I almost want to rephrase it to accepting the plan. And just, if you actually read through the report by the end of it, it comes up, you know, it says this is meant to be updated annually. They say, first of all, do the whole report over every five years and then update it annually and pick out your priorities. And so that's where I want us as a body, I'd like, and I know tomorrow, or on the 14th, the pedestrian committee is meeting, and this is actually on their list to now prioritize what's in here. And so I guess my request is to have this open dialogue with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. I don't feel like some of my requests for Range Line and the, and the schoolwork and really connecting, I feel like we need to connect the schools to the neighborhoods so kids can get safely from their homes to the schools. And it, to me, it feels like there's a lot of outside recommendations here that kind of help connect us to the rest of the region. Whereas I think, let's get our house in order first, let's get kids to school safely and connectivity to the retail areas to support business. And so I think we need to ultimately adopt the SIPLIS, and I hope we can come up, please come forward with some recommendations. And I think we should reconsider the wording of this motion. I mean, we should accept it, not adopt it. Thank you. I'd like to hear what else my colleagues have to say about the subject.
Or if I may at least answer a couple of those questions, and then of course, if anyone else does. So a couple of things, it is our standard practice to issue a scope of services and a request for proposals. That's exactly what was done for the Park and Open Space Board plan, and that was also done for the BikeWay plan. You may have recalled, the BikeWay actually went through this for 18 months to go through You may have recalled the, um, BikeWay actually went through this for eighteen months to go through the scope of services, to debate the delineation of the cost breakdown with Thievesville. They are by ordinance, both of the city and of Thievesville, a joint committee. And when ultimately they couldn't get to, um, a recommendation based on the price point, then they applied for the grant, which ultimately funded the plan. And there was a memorandum of understanding that split that cost between the city and Thievesville for the local portion of that project. They then worked with a consultant to both seek public input and, and unfortunately, they're not here to speak to the controls that they put to try to ensure that it was Mequon or Thievesville residents that answered. But in the end, it is supposed to look at the umbrella of bicycle and pedestrians. Your points about what ultimately gets done is the decision-making process that couldn't yet happen until we had a plan. So now that we have a plan, the Bike and Pedestrian Way Commission can do as Park and Open Space Board does, as Public Works does, as all of the committees do, and go through and prioritize the work that needs to be done. We do this for roads, for drainage CIP, for most any capital funding source that we have, is we go through and we identify the list of projects, which this plan does, and then we prioritize them and move them forward. But no one has told us some of these things will never get done. So those are your decisions to make. And if there is an indication that some of these projects won't move forward, that is that dialogue that needs to take place with the BikeWay Commission. But they will go through their process and then make recommendations as a part of that project. I, I will somewhat clarify that it is a part of the right-of-way asset management for bike facilities. So that is where their budget comes from, is for those assets within the right-of-way. And already includes decisions that this council has made. For example, the extension of sidewalk on Swan Road, the addition of sidewalk on the west side of Wawatosa Road. And this document is intended to help guide those decisions moving forward in terms of where those facilities should be located and where they should be considered. So while ultimately from this, there could be a five-year plan, it doesn't want to ignore where there may be other opportunities to require the addition of facilities through development. We do that quite often, where we require the developer to follow either our park plan, our road plan, our drainage plan, our BikeWay plan, that there's an opportunity to leverage that. There's also the consideration of when we do road work, to then be able to look at the plan to see were there bicycle or pedestrian facilities recommended. You may recall that you've recently made two decisions related to that, the addition of paved shoulders on Zedler and last year for the extension of paved shoulders on Highland Road. So these are all consistent things that the committee has intentionally done to request your approval or authorization of funding through the various processes that we already have. So this is just the next formalization of that, so that as you all continue to conduct business and have decision that you, or make decisions, that you have a document to fall back on, that's looked at the city holistically to discuss some of these. And it doesn't ma- mean that there may not be other projects that are prioritized that weren't identified in, um, that. There, there can certainly be that as well. But this is kind of the, the umbrella, big picture plan based on demographics and developments and needs of where we should be considering those various facilities.
If, you know, if I may too, that maybe there's a communication piece too, because if I'm correct, this overlaps with Thievesville as well. This is Mequon and Thievesville. And I don't know, I mean, I, I don't think there's any council connection to that committee at all, you know, like some of the other committees, there's no.
There is an aldermanic rep position, but you are correct, it has been left vacant for the last several years.
Yeah, so maybe that's part of, part of the issue too. Um, and then you've got the Mequon, uh, Mequon-Thievesville Trails and you're gonna overlap probably a little bit with the Park Board.
Actually, I would argue this is exactly why we want this plan, is to be able to deal with, um, entities like the MT Trails. So it is our plan and the city's vision that is followed. This is actually what prompted the Park and Open Space Board Plan update five years ago, was all of these well-intended people coming forward to donate things that we didn't ask for or maybe we didn't need, and then we were ultimately left with the burden to finance or maintain. So that, that actually was with all of those things in mind. And we would love for the MT Trails Foundation to then use this plan in their future fundraising efforts to be able to implement some of this.
Yeah, I, I, I guess my, that's, that's great, because like when you have your, you mentioned like the sewer, you know, you look at that over the next six years, you kinda have a clear idea of what might be happening. I'm just hoping that somebody is gonna take the leadership and be able to do that from this report and create a little five-year plan from that that's manageable, so it just doesn't get lost. And I don't know whose responsibility that is, but I, my guess is that committee is gonna need a little administrative help to put that plan together. That's just my.
And they do, so they review the road program, the five-year road pr- program every year to see where it touches any of the recommendations that they have, so they can be sure to incorporate it into that. And then they make an annual request to you as the common council as a part of the annual budget process for funding based on their prioritized projects. And obviously, if, if the funding isn't designated, and they understand where they fall. I, I don't, I don't know that anybody envies your position, because this is just talking about BikeWay. This isn't also talking about roads and also talking about infrastructure or parks or development. This is only one piece of the larger, um, puzzle that you all have to solve, especially when you look at budgets. But it is what they use to inform so that they're not picking and choosing projects, that they are having a, a plan that they're utilizing to base their goals and decisions on to make those recommendations and requests to this body.
So maybe the accepting piece might work with, with me rather than.
Look, I think that's statutory.
Yeah, I just wonder if there's a difference legally, Attorney Sajak, of acceptance versus adopting. Um, because if it was adopting, I just feel like more, I would need more time to make sure I'm, like, for example, there's, they recommend a bri- a, a, a bridge across the river.
That's Sewer PAC's trans- long-range transportation plan. So it's cited in here.
But by it being in here, and then we adopted, that's not something I ever wanna fund.
That has been in there for at least the last thirteen years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's in a lot of our documents as well, cause it follows the.
But to adopt it is signaling that we're okay with it, isn't it? So I don't know.
I'm just saying it's already in other documents that.
Well, I guess that was my question for the attorney.
It's just a project we will probably never fund, cause it's, the last cost estimate was twenty million dollars for that. Yeah, uh, Alderman Strochak?
So I guess the question at hand is the, if we use the word adopt, are we agreeing to everything that's in the plan? Or do we wanna have some feedback on it, just says, saying we're adopting it as a, as a guiding light for them to work and come forward with recommendations?
You're adopting a set of recommended ideas for a plan. You're not committing to doing any of them. In fact, we will probably do almost no, none of them.
So based on that, I'm okay with the wording either way. I sat on this committee for a year and they are a hard-working group. They care about bike and bike safety. They have some good ideas. They've come forward with funding. They're very frustrated because every time something comes forward for funding, we shoot it down cause we're trying to, you know, hold the line with no tax increases.
But I'll say, we don't, we don't shoot it down every time. We've, we've agreed to widen the shoulders on Highland and we are doing it again on Zedler. So we do chip away at it, but we don't often poach one of these proj- projects on its own. We'll do it in conjunction with something else. So there's at least some economies of scale.
The year that I sat on it, we shot it down and the year after we shot it down. So other years we've done better, I agree. However, some, my point is, a little better integration with this committee here, just kinda maybe on their findings, maybe a quarterly kinda, you know, statement of mission and what they're working on, you know, in the minutes. It's, we read the minutes and we see the minutes, but really kind of a statement of what they're looking to do would be helpful as far as like planning. I've, I've advocated for the, the, I've advocated for the bike pass along Highland Road at Nauseum as well as other areas.
I don't mean to suggest that we're not gonna do any of them, but if we want to do more of these, the power to do them lies right here with these eight or nine people. We've got no one to complain to but ourselves.
I feel like there's been sufficient discussion here on the record to demonstrate we don't all agree with every recommendation in this report and there's no commitment whatsoever. To do any of them, it's kind of like a, it's a high-level plan. It's a little different than the Parks and Open Space Plan in my mind.
My.
Oh, I, I think they're exactly the same, except we might like more of those ideas.
Well, and that's what I mean about weighing those decisions. You may support more of the Parks ones and there may be others that don't support any of them, or, you know, whatever it is.
Over time, whereas in this, I fundamentally disagree with a lot of the rec, not a lot of them, several recommendations in here. So I don't, I just don't wanna be cited by staff or the committee later on as, oh, you guys adopted this and.
That's why we get the power of the Parks.
Why didn't you speak up then? And so here we are, speaking up. This is our one chance. Here you go.
And BikeWay recognizes they're only a recom, they're not even a standing committee, so they are a recommending body. So they don't have the authority to make any of these, um, decisions, which is why they make the recommendations to you all as decision-makers or sometimes through Public Works, um, as the decision-makers.
All I would like to see is twenty twenty-five, two or three bullet points, low-hanging fruit, some things that they think they could accomplish, twenty twenty-six.
It won't, it won't be twenty twenty-five, cause there's, there's not money.
Twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, you know, those, and just say, hey, you know, we're, we're repaving this, we might be able to look at this. So you've got each year for the next four years.
And I just wanna clarify, that is in the budget documents. We, we fill that out every single year with a five-year request of what all of that is. So that is standard, and again, we do that for parks and BikeWay and roads and everything else, that we have that five-year CIP. Actually, sewer's ten now, but for everything else, there is that five-year that identifies both the funding and the projects that, that the committees have, have prioritized and are requesting.
Alderman Strochak has his hand up first, I think.
I'm gonna just finish my thought. So this document is, is a, is a guideline of, of recommendations from a firm that we hired. I think what we're looking for as, as a council is, is a vision to agree on kinda moving forward. What I'm a little pulled back on is the fact that we've approved this, we've approved this, and everything comes forward and it's an individual project that doesn't tie into a vision. So I'm willing to adopt this, but I really want a vision statement of prioritization as how it comes forward. Maybe a committee of the whole discussion or wherever you deem appropriate to kinda go through where we're at. Because the communities that are moving forward and are creating a pedestrian-friendly and a bike-safe community that are around the United States, not even Wisconsin, they have a vision and a plan and they really have an overarching plan in which they wanna approve and a certain level they wanna get at for bike safety and, and, and bike and pedestrian traffic within the community. The idea of this committee is to have that there and have a group advocating for it. But it comes forward in a project by project by project. As we've even stated as a council tonight, we approve one Z, two Z, three Z. Let's work on that vision and see where that fits in with the pulse of the council and then we'll vote on each item accordingly based on the vision.
We, we have a committee. I think we're giving that committee direction in our comments here tonight, so. We don't, I don't think this is a committee of the whole thing. I think the ki, the, not yet anyway. The Bike and Pedestrian Way Commission needs to meet and prioritize the list on there and make recommendations. Maybe we'll have a, a broader discussion about it at budget time. Uh, but the, the, the purse strings are controlled by this body. So, you know, the, it has to be in alignment of eyes and stomach at some point to, um, not to discourage anyone, but that's just the reality of where we're at. Anyone else? Um, I'm losing track of everyone raising their hand here. Uh, Alderman Hancher?
Well, I think the point of this document was that you have a overriding, uh, look at what the, the, the city is looking at. And then what makes sense to have these bike paths and pedestrian paths? You just can't have, cause you have people coming forward all the time, oh, we, we like to have this path, but, but does it make any sense to put it there? And I guess this document is kinda like saying, well, these are the places where it makes sense to connect the city together. As opposed to, oh, this doesn't really, put a bike path in the area where it makes no sense. So, uh, we talked about this in Public Works, um, a couple of months ago, about this document is really about identifying where is the best spots to, to, uh, m- make connections for the, for the, the paths, to make it inclusive in the city.
Alderman Meyer?
Uh, just shortly, I mean, if the common council feels more comfortable, we could table it and have them come back with their priorities for the next, each one of the years. And that way you'd be more satisfied with what they are looking at would be their higher priorities for it.
Well, I'll s- I'll say this, we had a chance to s- take a swing at this pinata back in, oh, December. So it was a long committee of the whole and if we didn't like things in the plan, we should have kicked them out then. Um, at this point, the consultant is done working on it, cause we had our comment period. I, I don't think there's any harm in adopting this as a high-level, multi, you know, multi-decade-long plan. And, and the committee will go forth and prioritize and bring some, some projects forward, regardless if we vote on this tonight or not. They're gonna have a meeting on it, whether we table it or not. I'd, I'd rather move it forward. And the reality of budgets and the things we really want will come out of the process naturally at the committee. And the things we don't want probably won't come out of the committee and if they do, we won't pay for them, cause we have that ability to do so. But I do have one, one request. Whoever wins Common Council President, please appoint Alderman Bach to the Bike, BikeWay Committee. He's he's, he's got lots of good ideas. I think he can provide the direction they maybe need and give, help them with the process. So, sorry to sign you up for something, but. Um, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, just to answer, uh, Alderman Parish's question, um, I, I'm not honestly familiar. Um, I did try to do a quick Google. I didn't see anything specifically that says, uh, adopt or accept, uh, the plan or not. Uh, what I can tell you is generally when you apply for funding, uh, grant funding, one of the questions is have you adopted a plan? And so I think that that's typically the word that you look for. Um, and that's consistent with how we do lots of other things. We, you know, just earlier tonight, we adopted a park and recreation plan. Um, we have a five-year CIP that we adopt. Um, you know, th- th- there's lots of plans that the council adopts on a regular basis that sets your kind of long-term goals and thoughts with the expectation that in most cases, it's just that. It's the wish list of things that we wanna get to. And, you know, uh, there's been plenty of times even here in Mequon, where you look at like the five-year CIP plan, for example, that you do your five-year CIP and then you get to the end and you're gonna update it to the new five-year plan. And the same items are on the list because you haven't gotten to it. So, um, at the end of the, it's just a, a proposal and a thought.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. I just, I don't agree that it's my wish list, but, but I think we have enough discussion here to, we have to move forward with it.
All right.
Let's do a SIP list. That's what we all want. So it sounds like we'll get it from the pedestrian committee.
All right, um, let's call the roll, unless there's any other comments or questions. Please call the roll.
Alderman Brat?
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Strochak?
Aye.
Alderman Tolaco?
Aye.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
A hopeful aye.
Alderman Parish?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We've adopted a plan. The BikeWay Committee's got, and Pedestrian Way Committee's got their work cut out for them this next year. Next up, Resolution forty-one eighty-nine, a resolution authorizing a contract for preemption upgrades to the highway-grade crossing on Mequon Road. Required to activate the traffic signals at the intersection of Mequon Road and Weston Drive to CDL Electric LLC of Pittsburgh, Kansas in the amount of seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Recommendation forthcoming from Public Works.
Public Works approved of it. I'd like to move the resolution.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? At long last, we are gonna break free of WISDOT being in our way. Alderman Gebhardt?
Great, great news to, as you said, move this project along. The one piece I didn't understand is, is I look at the fiscal impact, uh, narrative. It talks about an estimate of originally five hundred thousand dollars and through the course of time, we've determined that some of the work that was estimated may not be needed to complete, uh, what it is that we need to have done. And that cost now is seventy-five thousand. Is there savings because of that?
We're just not spending.
A theoretical savings.
We're not spending TIF money that's budgeted, but.
That's what I lost sight of. Okay, very, very good. Thank you.
So it might allow us to do something else, but there's also a time running out on the clock quickly for the TIF money, so. Yeah, the, the five hundred thousand was, uh, I know I can get it done for that number and not think about it too hardly, number from WISDOT and it included what?
It also included the actual relocation of the railroad signals, because we narrowed the cross-section. They hadn't yet had the determination as to whether the signals would be in the correct location. So the original agreement was under the assumption that the railroad signals would have to move and they do not have to move.
Any other comments or questions? All right, this is budgetary, so. Everyone's emphatically vote yes if you pref- pref- if you approve and, uh, hopefully no one disapproves, but you're allowed to disagree. Um, please call the roll.
Alderman Gebhardt?
Aye.
Alderman Strochak?
Aye.
Alderman Tolaco?
Aye.
Alderman Meyer?
Aye.
Alderman Hancher?
Aye.
Alderman Bach?
Aye.
Alderman Parish?
Aye.
And Alderman Brat?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Can't wait. Someone call CDL tomorrow and, or, let's, in fact, I'll, uh, I'll come in special and sign this early before I go on vacation next week, just to make sure we keep moving. Uh, Resolution forty-one ninety, a resolution awarding a contract for the twenty twenty-five HVAC preventative maintenance and emergency response services to J.F. Ahern Company, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, for the total estimated cost of thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Recommendation forthcoming from Public Works.
Public Works approved and I move Resolution forty-one ninety.
Motion and a second. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions from any of the Alderman? Hearing done, please call the roll.
Alderman Strelcheck.
Aye.
Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
And Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
That two passes. On to Resolution 4191, a resolution authorizing supplemental inspection services in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars during the 2025 construction season with the following engineering firms, Grafe USA, Capernaum Associates, M Squared, Sigma Group, R.A. Smith, and Rupert Milkie. Recommendation forthcoming from Public Works.
Public Works approved of it and so I move motion, Resolution 4191.
Second, move for approval, correct?
Yeah, move for approval. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Alderman Strelcheck.
Aye.
That two passes. On to Resolution 4192, a resolution approving an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for law enforcement mutual aid in Ozaki County. Recommendation forthcoming from public safety.
Public safety discussed, Resolution 4192 this evening, and recommended approval and I move approval tonight.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions, comments from any of the Alderman? If there is the chiefs here, just in case. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, okay, okay. There's a, there's a second order impact on potential cost. So we'll make this a roll call vote at the attorney's suggestion.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Strelcheck.
Aye.
And Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
An item carries as well. On to Resolution 4193, resolution approving receipt of a donation from the Mequon-Thiensville Community Foundation, the amount of sixteen thousand dollars for the purchase, training, and certification of a successor K-9 unit. Recommendation forthcoming from public safety.
As you recall, K-9 Duke unexpectedly passed away. We had a anonymous donor come forward and offered to make this donation for a new K-9. That money was then given to the Mequon-Thiensville Community Foundation and we discussed that tonight. The public safety committee recommends approval and I move approval this evening thanks to the donor and the community foundation.
Motion in a second. Yes, the relationship between the community foundation and the city on these K-9 units has been nothing short of outstanding. It really makes a big impact and if you've seen them out and in action, if you do a ride-along, they really add a lot of value and, man, people are really compliant when you get the dog out. It's amazing. So it keeps our officers safer too. So great stuff. Any other comments or questions from anyone? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Strelcheck.
Aye.
Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
And Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
That two carries. Looking forward to the new doggy when we get him. Resolution 4194, resolution approving the purchase of a replacement sewer televising truck, lateral camera, and related components from EnviroTech Equipment of Landin, Wisconsin, for a total estimated cost of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. This was recommended earlier this evening by the Sewer Utility District Commission.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Strelcheck.
Aye.
Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
And Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Our final resolution tonight, 4195, a resolution establishing financial policy statement number nineteen for the sewer credit policy. This was also recommended earlier this evening by the Sewer Utility District Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Strelcheck.
Aye.
Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer.
Aye.
Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
And Alderman Bach.
Aye.
That one passes as well. We have no specified unfinished business from prior meetings. We have two items under specified new business, appointment of Scott Regal to the Board of Appeals and appointments to the Mid-Marine Municipal Court. Justin and Will will be our representatives, assuming we approve these. This is actually just kind of fine what's been going on for years. We found out we actually have to formally adopt them as our representatives, so we're here to discuss it tonight. Is there a motion on any of these appointments?
Move approval.
Motion in a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Those appointments pass. On to our last item this evening, potential closed session. Personnel evaluation of the city administrator. The common council may convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-five print one print C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility and then may reconvene into open session to take such action as deemed appropriate. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye when we call the roll.
Alderman Brad.
Aye.
Alderman Gebhardt.
Aye.
Alderman Strelcheck.
Aye.
Alderman Talaco.
Aye.
Alderman Meyer. Alderman Hancher.
Aye.
Alderman Bach.
Aye.
Alderman Parrish.
Aye.
And Mayor Nerven.
Aye. We'll now convene in the closed session. I do not anticipate we'll be back.